August 27, 2015, Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. The prayer and the pledge tonight will be led by Pastor Dennis Bragdon of our Redeemer Lutheran Church. Please stand.
Good evening. I actually have a short devotion, but we can remain standing. It shouldn't tax us too much. I'm going to invite you, if you'd like to join me. The opening prayer will be the words of invocation that we use often in our worship at our church. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. My short devotion is based on Colossians, Chapter 3, Verse 17. It's something I got an email this morning and read it and said, "Oh, this will be good." "And whatever you do, in word or deed, do everything in the name of the Lord Jesus, giving thanks to God the Father through him." There was this 20-year-old Italian boy you may have read about in the news. He had a problem. You see, his father had given him a Ferrari 458, but it wasn't the year, make, and model that he was hoping for. Of course, his super-rich dad had also allowed him the privilege of driving any of the other 14 high-end vehicles that were in the family stables, but he didn't want that either. So the boy went to Ferrari dealership to see about trading in his brand-new 458. Another sad moment. He was told his vehicle for trade was only worth a paltry $193,500. Wouldn't be enough for him to purchase the model he wanted. Even worse, with his miserly $5,000 to $10,000 monthly allowance from his parents, it'd take him a long time to save up for what he wanted. The Ferrari salesman took him aside and had a suggestion. Suggested if a young man set fire to the car, the insurance payment would be sufficient to allow him to buy the vehicle of his dreams. So the lad thought about it, recruited two of his friends, and the car was a charred wreck. Of course, insurance companies don't tend to just write checks for these amounts without doing a little investigating. And as they investigated and asked the police to assist, this plot by the boys was discovered. It didn't help them that it turned out they did this in full view of a security camera whose video was made available. So they were convicted but put on probation. My first thought when I read that story is, "Well, here's a young man needs to hear the message of Colossians 3:17." "And whatever you do, in word or deed, do everything in the name of the Lord Jesus, giving thanks to God the Father through it." Of course, maybe that young Italian man isn't the only person who needs to hear the message of Colossians 3:17. Lot could be said. Just one point to me of tension, see, clearly there was a man out in Virginia a couple days ago that was unthankful for all that God had provided him with and excessively focused on what God had not provided him with, and that led to tragedy. But for all of us, there are probably way too many times when we fail to give thanks to the Heavenly Father for all the blessings He has provided for us. Most certainly, no matter what earthly, material things, or positions, or health we may have or not have, we still always have the good news of Jesus Christ, His suffering and death on the cross, His resurrection from the dead, as our assurance that nevertheless, God is still with us. So perhaps our words and actions thoughtfully ought to be demonstrations of being thankful for what God has indeed allowed us to have. Cell phones, microwave ovens, return of Blue Bell ice cream. You fill in your own blank here, whatever it is the Lord brings to your mind. We give thanks, so let us pray. Dearly Father, we pause this night to thank and praise you for all the blessings that you have given us, and ask that you would help us to focus on that which we have received and be thankful and grateful for it. And let our thankfulness and gratefulness for what you have given us be something that we show and demonstrate to others. Above all, our thankfulness for the gift of Jesus Christ as our Savior. We ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bragdon. Okay, we are now to our employee recognition. On August the 11th, representatives from the city of Longview accepted an outstanding Public Water System Award from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. This is awarded to only one municipality in the state of Texas. It represents overall excellence in all aspects of a public water system. The employees of the city of Longview Public Water System work diligently to ensure that the city of Longview meets these criteria and exceeds federal, state, and local standards placed upon them. We would like to congratulate the Public Water System employees on the state award and on a job well done. Although we would like to recognize all those employees, that wouldn't be possible since many of them are on duty right now providing our water for us. So those present are Mike Brown. Please come forward. Don't be bashful. Mike Brown, Selena Taber, Steve Montgomery, Sal Posano, Kent Chipman, Rick Evans, Brian Richardson, and Roy Buchanan. I want to present you all this plaque from TCEQ and just say, "What a job well done. What an amazing thing that we all take for granted, everyone who is sitting in this room take for granted every time we turn our faucet on, we drink a glass of water, how good it is." And it's because of the dedication and the service of you all and all those that are still working, and we really, truly, from the city of Longview, appreciate your service and thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you so much. Did I mention this award is awarded to only one municipality in the state of Texas? That is really something to be applauded. Okay, we have two tonight. Mr. Lee McMichael began his career with the city of Longview on April 24, 1979, in code enforcement. After spending 10 years there, he transferred to Parks Recreation where he operated heavy equipment. Lee was responsible for park mowing for five years. He made sure the park system had well-maintained acreage. His supervisor considered Lee the best equipment operator in the department. He transferred once again, making streets and drainage his home, and began operating the street sweeper. Over the last 21 years with streets and drainage, Mr. McMichael has trained over 75 equipment operators, picked up over 200,000 cubic yards of debris. This debris would cover a football field stacked 100 feet high in the air. He has swept 121,000 miles of streets. This is halfway to the moon. Lee McMichael embodies what it means to give exemplary service and to perform at the highest level of professionalism. The city of Longview would like to thank Mr. McMichael for his tenure, professionalism, and wish him the best in his retirement. Please come forward, Mr. McMichael. I just want to say, this young man has given so much of his life to the city of Longview, and he's been such a dedicated employee. And I know when I see those street sweepers out there, it's a pretty lonely job. Out there by yourself, sweeping the streets, kind of like the Maytag repairman. But we appreciate you, and we thank you for your dedication. We wish you so much happiness in your retirement, a well-deserved retirement at the city of Longview. We want to present you with this cloth, and thank you for your 36 years of service to the city of Longview.
Mr. Willard, you remember back when I got that 35-year pen?
I do.
And you said you wanted my job?
I did.
Well, here's the keys right here. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Let me introduce the new city manager to you. Did I mention covering a football field 100 feet high in the air? Goodness, what an accomplishment. Thank you, sir. Thank you to all of our city employees. Once again, we oftentimes don't recognize what a job well done is done, and we want to take these opportunities to thank you when we can, so thank you very much. Okay, we're at a citizen comment. We have a number of speaker cards. Let me remind you, if you're speaking on an agenda item, you get six minutes. If you're speaking on an item not on agenda, you get three minutes. We will hold you to the time. There's a little buzzer there. When you hear it go off, please don't make me tell you to sit down, because it's very embarrassing for me and for you. When you hear it go off, time's up. That's it, okay? Our first speaker card is Don Knute.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and council members, appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I've been involved indirectly with the council over my past 15 or 20 years here, and I want to say that I think the council has done a terrific job for this city, and I want to commend those that have served in the past. But over the last year or two, I have some questions that I would like to voice today about direction that we're going and concerning especially fiscal responsibility. I'll just bring up two areas, and I have to admit I don't have the numbers on these, so just the trash pickup area and the animal shelter area. I know these are ones that you've struggled hard on, and I just want to use those as examples. I believe that there's three possible problems that the council may have, and I want to point these out from... And I believe that what I'm saying represents a lot of seniors that I've talked to. First, I think that we can't be the biggest and best in everything that we do in Longview. That's a nice goal, but it costs way too much to do that. So we have to pick our projects and realize that good is better than none, if you've got the money to pay for it. Second, I think that we've allowed perhaps small groups to influence decisions made by the council. With my two examples, for example, and I don't know that this is true, but I will just say that perhaps the people that are into recycling, and I'm not against that, I'm all for it, but if it costs the city twice as much to do, or whatever the number is, it seems to me that's a problem. And the animal shelter area, I love animals, but we don't have to have Mitzvah Mahal for stray animals, I'm sorry. I believe that we can make good decisions in those areas without overdoing it. And I believe that small groups shouldn't be allowed to dominate majority in this city. Third, we need to count the cost before we take action. I know you know that, and I know you've been good about doing that, but when it comes out that this project costs a lot more, or it's going to take millions of dollars to staff this project that we didn't count on, I think that's poor foresight. I'm sorry. So I just want to speak my mind here today and hope that you all forgive me if I've stepped on any toes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next speaker card is Ms. Kelly Highcamp.
Good evening, Council. Kelly Highcamp, I know most of you and some of you are new to me, but I'm an animal welfare attorney. I work here in Longview, but I'm also someone who works to support animal welfare legislation. I've drafted a city ordinance for the city of Longview to consider. I'm hoping that we'll be able to also work it on a state level in the next legislative session. But unfortunately, it deals with the most god-awful and imaginable circumstances that Longview experienced. It was the fire in June of this year at the Kimbrough Animal Hospital that took 38 lives. I'm asking that the city pass an ordinance that would require, without question, that a 24-hour monitored fire detection system be installed in any facility that has animals housed within. That's not just veterinary clinics. That would be shelters, groomers, pet stores, and boarding facilities. It is minimal cost, and I can assure you that several of the veterinary clinics, groomers, and pet supply companies, and others already have in place a security system, a burglary system, which concerns me greatly, because is that the priority, to protect the profits and the equipment, or to protect those from which they profit? These are animals that are trapped in cages. They're unable to get out. I don't see how it's any different than elder care or daycare. I think it's unimaginable to think that a 24-hour smoke detection system would not be required if children or elderly people were left alone without any escape overnight. In addition, I'm asking that the city consider requiring automatic sprinkler systems be installed and required in new structures and renovated facilities. I think it's standard. I understand that some people may say that they're opposed to it in current facilities because of cost, but it's much less expensive when you're in the new structure construction and the renovations, which are already ongoing. In addition, I'm asking the city adopt NFPA 150. If you have any questions about that, I understand that the fire marshal is here and he can answer questions about NFPA 150. But briefly, it is the wording of NFPA 150, the Standard on Fire and Life Safety in Animal Housing Facilities. NFPA 150 recognizes three fundamental principles, that, one, animals are sentiment beings with a value greater than that of simple property. We're not talking about coats and couches. We're talking about live beings that are treated as chattel in the state of Texas. Second, animals, both domesticated and feral, lack the ability of self-preservation when housed in buildings and other structures, again, much like daycare facilities and elder care facilities. The third is the current building fire and life safety codes do not address the life safety of animal occupants. I am not an expert on fire safety, far from it, and I'm not an expert on animal welfare either, but I am briefly familiar with the laws applying to that, and there's no law in the state of Texas, and certainly not within the city of Longview, that protects these animals. I think that there are families here today that will talk about their heartache. We can prevent that. This was a preventable situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Highcamp. Mr. John Sims. Welcome, Mr. Sims, former councilman, Mr. Sims. Nice to have you back in chamber, sir.
Boy, this seems strange being down here. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Willard, council, I'm here endorsing what Kelly just had to say to you. But before I get started on that, I'm kind of reminded of that old song, "Old councilmen never die. They just fade away." And I thought I was going to fade away and stay away, but I had to come tonight because this is near and dear to my heart. That was a tragic thing that happened, and we need to pass an ordinance to at least get those that keep our pets overnight at least have a fire alarm. I know you'd never pass putting in sprinklers as it's... It'd cost too much. My dog Phoebe died about two weeks ago, and had she have died in a manner other than natural causes, I can assure you it would have hurt me a hell of a lot worse. If we can't, if they just will not put in a fire alarm, I would like for you to pass an ordinance stating that they need to post by the front door that they do not have a fire, any fire protection for animals that's left overnight. That way, at least it gives you a chance to take a chance, or not. So that's all I have to say. I feel very nervous out here. I don't know, I wasn't nervous up there, but golly, my old knees are kind of knocking a little bit. So your consideration to these things, because, hey, I read in the paper the other day, you're putting sprinklers in the new animal shelter, so I know you know it's necessary, but in lieu of that, let's do something to kind of protect these. And by the way, if anybody has an animal or knows of one, two years or older, I'm looking for one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. You're welcome anytime in chamber, sir. Thank you for being here. Don and Laura Childs.
We're all nervous. Public speaking is definitely not my thing, so y'all excuse me if my voice is shaky.
Don't be nervous. Take your time. But y'all still only get three minutes.
Right, I'm going to hurry. I'm hurrying. We lost our bulldog to the Kimbrough Animal Fire in June. My children lost their grandmother to cancer on Saturday. We've experienced so much sadness this summer, and I'm here speaking to you because our dog's death could have been avoided. My children had no choice but to watch and experience their grandmother's brutal battle with cancer over the last nine years, but because the boarding facility that our Lola was entrusted to did not have any fire safety measures, she is dead. This was Lola. Lola was 10 months old when she died from smoke inhalation. We were told that if there had been a monitored fire system in the office, that all 38 pets would be alive today. We never once thought about asking about safety before boarding her. I trusted the office, like most of the general public, to provide the very basic necessities for keeping her safe. We were on vacation in Gulf Shores when my friend called to ask if I had boarded her with that facility and to tell me that it was on fire. At that moment, I was scared, but I was hopeful, because surely the fire department right down the road made it there quickly. I never dreamed that they were not contacted until approximately 30 minutes after the fire started, when a passerby saw the fire and called it in. I've heard that the movement to force offices to put in a system should be consumer-driven and not government-enforced. Since the fire, it's my understanding that many vets and facilities have not yet gotten monitored alarms. Unfortunately, many will not unless they are forced to do so. Here we are a couple of months later, and the 38 pets are a distant memory to many. Many of the offices in the city have not put safety measures in, and their customers still entrust their loved ones to them without asking any questions. My daughter sleeps at night surrounded by the photos of Lola. She sleeps with a stuffed bulldog that resembles her. I do not want another family to have to endure the loss of a family member, a pet, in this senseless way. This was totally avoidable. Longview has the opportunity to rise from the ashes, so to speak, and to put in place a model for other cities to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Dr. Susan Little.
Mr. Mayor, I think she just had a comment card. I don't think that she's here to speak.
Okay, very good. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is anyone else that'd like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Very good. Okay, thank you all. That brings to the consent agenda. Are there any eyes on the consent agenda people would like to have pulled off for separate discussion?
Let's approve. Second.
Move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Onto budget items. Discussion on the proposed 2015-2016 budget and fee for the city of Longview. Mr. Willard, city manager.
Started to tell Mr. Sims I know how he feels, but he left, so... Mayor and council, once again, want to visit about a particular section of the budget that we, when we left the last meeting, we wanted to get some more information back to you, and that's in regard to the sanitation budget, the dollar a month proposal that we've put forward to you. We wanted to discuss that further. And I thought it would be beneficial... You had asked the perfect question at the last meeting, why do you need or feel like that you need the dollar rate increase? And again, we've met with our staff and we've talked at length about that, and I think, hopefully, this will explain our position as best we can, and it comes down to really increase costs in labor and to provide the service that we're trying to provide for our customers. And you'll see, we've got it broken down, and this is not in great detail, but it's the main categories of our budget, and FY '14-'15 that will end at the end of September, and then the proposed '15-'16 budget. And I'd like for you to notice the top line, city labor and benefits. The increase from last year to this year is about $263,000, such an increased cost in labor. Now, I'll talk a little bit more about labor in just a second, but this, again, is outside of the general fund, and it is an enterprise fund, which means that we, much like the water fund that we've talked about, is that we set the rate for our customers based on the cost of what it provides, what it costs us to provide the service for the customer. And so, on the revenue side, or the expense side, it comes up for this year, $5,342,465. And this, it contemplates the dollar rate increase in it, and so the revenue, we have set our rates accordingly based on that cost of service, and that would come up to $5,341,646. The next slide outlines the increased cost in our labor that we need. This contemplates two drivers that we need and one cart worker. We've had some issues delivering carts in a timely manner, and we've been short of personnel to do that, and that contemplates that. We had the reorganization and reclassification recently to try to get our sanitation workers where they needed to be, and we feel like those are some of the hardest-working people that we have in the city, and that we want to make sure we pay them accordingly to represent that and to reflect that. And then the addition of the two drivers and one cart worker is $121,475. So just our increased labor cost to provide this service at the level we want to provide, which is to pick up all of the waste stream in Longview. Those extra costs are $263,280, and so the dollar increase represents, with 24,500 customers, would raise $294,000. Next slide, please. So this slide really, I think...
Time out.
Yes, sir.
I'm no math genius. 24,000 customers times a dollar is 24,000.
A month, a dollar a month. A month, a dollar a month.
Okay. For the 12, okay, for the 12 months.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. It wasn't working for me.
No.
Okay.
Yes. So, you see, with the dollar rate increase, the revenue would be $5,341,646. The expenses, total expenditure is $5,342,465. That would give us an ending fund balance. We feel like we need to purchase the truck to keep our fleet up where it needs to go and, and, and keep the trucks that we need on the road with the less cost of expense. So, that would pull our fund balance down to 16.53%, which is $935,000. Now, by council policy, we've set 15% fund balance, and that would secure above that, that policy to have a fund balance left. Next slide.
Mr. Willard, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Time out, time out. Sorry to keep interrupting.
No.
I gotta go while it's on my mind.
Sure.
Tell me the reasoning or the position we're taking behind we're purchasing one automated, automated side loader. We lease eight?
Yes. Well, we purchased, did we purchase all those?
They're lease purchases.
Lease purchase, yes.
We're on a lease purchase, but this is a pure purchase.
Cash, yes.
So, why are we not lease purchasing this one like we have the other eight?
Well, we prefer to pay cash for them.
Okay. I mean, I just need to know why we're doing something different because of the-
I think with the amount of the trucks when we got into the program, eight trucks.
To do eight at one time would be quite an expense.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
So, this slide shows without the rate increase, that, the revenue and the expenses, and that would bring the fund balance down below the 15% to $635,018. So, the basic, I think, thing here is that the increased cost in labor, the 3% raise that we want to pay our employees to make sure they are where they need to be in the reorganization, we, we need the, the extra people to continue that service and to be better. And we want to come back after the budget and talk to you later on in the, in the late fall, early winter, about changes that we might need to make in the system to gain more efficiency. You know, and there's been a lot of talk about what's inside the cart, what's outside the cart, what's bulky item, what's, you know, junk that we pick up, and how people are working that kind of a system. But our goal is, we're still have to deal with all that waste stream, because we don't want illegal dumping to, to get further out of hand. The question is, how do we charge appropriately for those types of situations? And, and that will make us more efficient down the road when we come. But we want to come back, and there's a lot of considerations about that. Do you want a bag limit? How much should that be, if any? How much do we want to charge for bulky item pickups or junk pickups? How we want to do all that? And I think that's gonna, we'd need to take a work session or something where we can present all the different options to you and see which way you feel like you'd like for us to go. But that would be a discussion to come back later for you, so.
And-
Yes.
Why do we need two new drivers?
Dwayne, you want to speak to that?
Getting a new truck.
Let's go back to the other slide.
Aren't we retiring an old truck?
Yeah. Getting a new, adding one.
Okay.
The original plan called for 12, and as you know, we ended up going to 14.
Drivers?
14 drivers. We're talking about just drivers. And, and, and then we've had to move that to 16. And so, and the reason why we have to go to 16 is because we found ourselves faced with situations where people are on vacation, people are on sick, and you just didn't have enough to do the routes. And so, that 16 number moves us to a position where we can make sure we have 12 available every day. But that was the challenge that we were facing. Anytime you have these heavy labor positions like this, if you don't have that guy, the job doesn't get done, so you have to have that coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Dwayne, are those, the two new drivers, will they be city employees under our complete benefits, or will they be through one of the labor-ready organizations?
They will be city employees, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And will that also reduce the overtime? Because I know your guys have spent a lot of overtime picking up while we're ironing, ironing out the kinks in this process.
Right. It, it will shut down overtime. The only time that we do overtime is because they work every holiday.
Right.
So, we do, we do handle that. But other than that, there won't, there shouldn't be any overtime at all.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Willard, I look forward to the lively discussion about how we're going to handle waste in the coming year with the bulky item pickups, with the outside the containers. I look forward to that discussion. I think we need to have that discussion so that we can make educated decisions that benefit this community.
Yes, sir.
Because nobody wants to see, nobody wants to see anything go up that doesn't have to go up. Myself nor anyone, any other tax-paying citizens along here. So, I want us to run as clean and as concise operation as we can. And I know that, I know that there have been bumps in this road. And I'm willing to give it another year. But we got to get these bumps ironed out, or we have to go to a system that does continue to create these issues that we're having with our citizens that are paying these bills.
Right.
So, I hope that that's what we'll be able to do. And I have all the confidence in the world that we will be able to do that. Now, would you please explain one thing, mainly for the benefit of those that are watching or those that don't understand? Because in, in this budget, we've talked about two things, in our general fund and in, in this fund, we're using fund balance in, in two of our funds to complete this budget. Please explain to us how we get a fund balance and how we build that fund balance back up.
Okay. Well, we, in, in this particular fund, in the sanitation fund and with the, the water and sewer as well, the fund balances are created, we try to keep them above the 15%. And of course, if, if we get down below that or right to that, we can cut back on what we're putting over into the capital column for capital cash purchases in the future to keep that above that number. Or we spend less than what we take in if, if we have, you know, a, a good budget year and, and we can have some saving, year-end savings and that, that goes straight into the fund balance, the surplus line. So, we work very hard, number one, to keep that above the 15%. And then also to, on our bond covenants as well in the water and sewer fund. Here, we don't really have the bond covenants like we do in water and sewer, but we try to, it's just a factor of spending less or having a, a better year. If we have increased water sales as a result of, of dry years, that fund balance number will come up. And, and that's what we try to move over into, into our capital cash account. So, it's much like farming, you know, in a way. When we have a wet year, then we use a lot of that fund balance because we're not selling water. So, it's very important to keep that up. And, and when we have a, a dry year, that goes straight back into the bottom line and available for the, the years when we have the weather in and out.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
How much longer do we have to go on the lease purchase of the trucks and carts?
There are three more payments to be made.
Three more years?
Go ahead.
Are they annual payments?
We've made, we've made one payment already. We'll make one, and this is a budget that you're looking at, and then we'll have three more payments, and we'll be done with those trucks.
Okay, so, once we're done with that, will, how long will the trucks last versus how long we're paying for them?
We'll get, we'll get 14 years out of them is what we're, we're hoping to do. And so, they'll be paid off in five.
So-
And so, during that time, you should see some savings. And it'll allow us, we're gonna have to put in a vehicle replacement plan back in place. And once we see those savings from that payment going down, that's when we can put that back into place. And that's why we've had to go ahead and buy one to, to get that a little bit started. But when that five years is up, we'll really be able to get that going.
All right. So, there's gonna be some savings to the taxpayers after that point that'll really start to show up?
Yes.
Okay.
And we don't want to get in the position where having to buy, lease eight new trucks all at one time again. So, those savings, when, when the debt comes down, will be, go back, right down to the bottom line in, in the, the fund balance and to be able to purchase with cash these, the next round of trucks as they come out. So, we think in a couple of years, with our, where we are, and then with some of those payments going off the books, and more efficiencies that we think we're still, are out there for us to gain, by what we're gonna, the discussion we're gonna have later, we think this will put us in pretty, in good shape. Any other questions on that? The other thing I had, unless you all have some other things, to talk about the fee resolution. We passed those out at the last meeting. If you have any questions over those, we're not adopting the budget tonight. But if you have any more questions on those, feel free to call, and we can, or if you have any questions tonight on that, we'd be happy to entertain some of those, or any other thing you'd like to talk about.
I, I would like to see those brought before and as a discussion item in our next meeting, so we can discuss each one of them as necessary.
Okay.
Okay? So, we can go over them one by one.
All right, sir.
Mayor, can, can I make some comments?
Sorry, Ed. Without a time.
I had my chance last time.
Please.
Are you through with me down here?
I am.
I am.
Is Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. I mean, not altogether. I don't want you to be-
(laughing)
Just for right now.
Yeah. First thing I want to do, Mr. Willard, is, is thank you and your staff. I, I spent a lot of time asking incessant list of questions. Your budget team has met with me on a number of times, asking questions. You've been very responsive and very professional, and, and I appreciate that. That's very commendable, and thank you. Back in June, the mayor asked us to, to look at the, at this proposed budget, and I, I took him at his word, and I've, I've looked at every department in the city, not the individual expenses that, that go into that department, except for the city council budget. I did look at individual expenses for that. But wherever I saw a, a, a large difference between this year and what was proposed last year, either less or more, that prompted a question. Staff answered those questions very well. You know, are, are there additional cuts that probably could be made? Sure. But I think we're at the point that any additional significant cuts are going to severely impact services that we provide our citizens. Staff started out the budget deliberations with dipping into the fund balance to the tune of about $4.5 million. They've been able to cut that down to the $1,008, where we're at now. And that's in spite of the many initiatives that the mayor started and our, our, our comprehensive plan, the animal shelter. So, that's, that's to be applauded. You, you've done a fantastic job. I was able to, to suggest a few changes here and there that save some money, but the bulk of the credit goes to the budget team. You all did a fantastic job. So, for what it's worth, I'm happy with the general fund expense level that, that is being presented to us here. Water and sewer is another story, but if you'll let me keep on my, on my role, let me, let me talk about that. At the risk of being remembered as that councilman who, after only three months in office, committed political suicide, I'd like to bring back up for discussion the water and sewer rates that staff initially proposed back in June. You know, contrary to public perception and newspaper editorials, that was not proposed to bring the, the, the fund balance back up. Last September, we raised water and sewer rates, and that was after a good revenue year. So, rate increases are reluctantly recommended to keep pace with costs. There, there, you know, there's no way around it. We have a double-A bond rating, and we have bond covenants that we have to meet in order to satisfy our bondholders. We have debt service coverage, and without the rate increase, we're right at our, our minimum that our financial policy calls for. So, I talked last time about our taxpayers subsidizing water and sewer customers to the tune of about $280,000, paying for general obligation debt. You know, I'd like to talk about the, the water and sewer fund paying their fair share of that debt. We need to look beyond the 15-16 fiscal year. We need to look start planning for 16-17, because as we've talked about, and the mayor has mentioned a number of times, we can only dip into this fund balance one time. We can't keep going to that well. The general obligation interest and sinking fund, we've budgeted dipping into that fund balance to the tune of $200,000 this year. That can't go on. When we meet with the rating agencies at, after the first of the year, we're gonna have some red flags that we're gonna have to overcome. If we get downgraded, you know, just one notch, and our, and, and our $8 million bond sale costs us a tenth of a percent, that adds $100,000 over the life of the bonds to interest cost. And, and we cannot afford that. So, I would just like to toss out to the six of you, you know, let's, let's talk about possibly putting that rate increase in place. It would give us about $172,000 in revenue. That coupled with some CIP money, we could transfer $272,000 into the general obligation interest and sinking fund, and water and sewer could cover its share of, of that debt. Just by way of comparison, after months and months of negotiation and studies, back in May, we ratified a 12.8% rate increase for Atmos Energy. The City of Tyler is proposing a 10.3% rate increase to minimum water users. And for a 10,000 gallon customer, they're proposing almost $5 a month. What we are proposing is 20 cents a month for a 5/8 inch meter and 50 cents a month for a 1-inch meter. And that would cover all of our single-family home. So, I, I just, I tossed that out to talk about. That concludes my prepared remarks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Council discussion?
I, I appreciate your comments, and I, I share your, your sentiment as well. I am concerned. When we look at the data and, and the amount of money that we have invested in infrastructure, each of our four water treatment plants, if I'm correct, the slide that was shown that discussed how much it would cost us to replace in 2015 those facilities, because there's a reason why we have such great water in Longview. It's a hot commodity for us. And that being said, sometimes I think that maybe we need to do a better job of informing the public of the amount we have to invest in maintaining that infrastructure, because it takes money. You know, I've been visiting with a couple people, and, and I shared that many years ago, Longview was rated like number five in the nation for our water, and we're still at the top of the list. And so, I do think that as a council, we probably need to, to have some discussion and consider the increase so that we can stay above par as we move forward on this one.
Thank you for the discussion. Very nice. Okay. We'll have a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. The city council will vote on the tech, on the tax rate on Thursday, September the 10th, 2015, at 5:30 PM in the City Hall, Council Chambers at 300 West Cotton Street, Longview, Texas. Angela Cohen, our finance director.
Good evening. State statute requires that two public hearings be held on the proposed tax rate. The proposed rate is 12.99 cents for debt service, 38 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 50.9 cents per $100 valuation. Second public hearing will be September 4th, 2014, held here at City Hall.
The public hearing is now open?
I thought it was September 3rd.
3rd, yes. Public hearing is open. Any speaker cards? Anyone like to just talk about this public hearing? If not, public hearing is now closed. Okay. That brings to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Ms. Noddy?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Mack. I would like to take the opportunity to, as a friendly reminder, I will be hosting a field day this Saturday, August 29th, at the Stamper Park, just as an interest for the community. It will be a kickoff for our CPR initiative, compassion, pride, and respect. That is what we're trying to, once again, build within that community. A field day of fun activities for young as well as people our age. There will be tournaments, softball, flag football, kickball, basketball. There will be vendors. There's live music. We're just asking everyone to please come out and help support this event. I look forward to seeing you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Ms. Williams?
I'm all over that. I'm trying to get it on the cable. The first slide, I want to congratulate Pastor DJ Nelson for 20 years in the ministry. Had the pleasure of being there to read a proclamation from the city, had county officials and state representatives on hand as well, so that was a great time. And also want to thank everyone who helped, many people helping this community with Top Teens of America, an organization near and dear to my heart. And we had our great leadership retreat. That's a picture of some of the kids, and it was really great, and just want to thank everyone for their support. And also, coming up, you'll hear from me later, my church will be celebrating Family and Friends Day, September the 20th. She's nodding her head. She'll be there, because I'll be at the event Saturday. But we want to encourage people to, to continue to pray for our community, stay in the Lord, and you're welcome to come to my church on September the 20th at 3 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara?
Just wanted to congratulate and make sure everyone saw in the paper this week that Keep Longview Beautiful had received a grant from the Texas State Parks Department. I probably said that wrong, but $400,000 will go towards helping construct the green, which is going to be an incredible project at 31 and Spur 63. So really great example of a nonprofit that's bringing funds into our community to help beautify our entryways and all of Longview. So, good job, Kim Droge, and everybody else.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Allen?
Motion to excuse.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor. We'll excuse Mr. Allen again. Okay. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure tonight to announce that we have extended an offer of employment to Shannon Johnson to be the new director of our animal shelter that will be, is currently under construction. We're really pleased. We went through a very lengthy process, recruitment process, to get to this point and interviewed four outstanding individuals that we invited to come in and to interview, and our committee unanimously thought that Shannon would be the person to really lead us forward. She is from Everett, Washington. She does understand East Texas summers. We made sure she knew that, but anyway, she's from Everett, Washington, and she is currently the director of the Everett, Washington Animal Shelter since 2010. During her tenure, she's overseeing the construction of that new animal shelter. She grew her volunteer program in that capacity to a current involvement of over 300 active volunteers that she's put together for her program there. She's brought her budget into alignment, raised revenues, provided animal welfare, educational opportunities, and other things into the local community. She's very passionate about animals, as you would need to be to be in that position, and we're very excited to have Shannon come on board. She'll be here October the 20th, I believe, 6th?
26th.
26th, thank you. Will be her first day, and we'll certainly bring her in, let you all meet her, but we think she'll do a fantastic job, so...
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that Shannon is now operating a shelter basically of our size, and she is doing it in the manner that we would consider to be no-kill, which means she's not putting down animals for space purposes. So anyway, I think that's wonderful. I think she'll be the right person to lead our new facility in the direction we want it to go.
And we did ask Ms. Ishihara, and we appreciated her comments and her input. We did a second interview of Shannon, our budget, or our team, interview team did, and then we asked Ms. Ishihara to come in, and we appreciate her input in that. If you wanted to make any comment about Shannon, other than...
That was it.
That was it, all right. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Our national night out kickoff event will be held Tuesday, September the 1st, from 6 to 8 PM at Mont Cobb. So please come out and join us. That's always a great event. That's great for our city. Okay, survey time. This week's survey was, do you consider implementing the comprehensive plan projects like parks, trails, event center bike lanes as part of economic development? Eighty percent plus said yes. Very good to know. Secondly, do you think the Dallas Cowboys will make the playoffs? Fifty-six percent to 44 percent said no. Are you kidding me? Come on, lefty. That kind of surprised me there. I was a little bit surprised on that one. But thanks for those that took the survey. We had great numbers again this week. Keep taking them, keep putting input in. It really helps us out in kind of seeing direction, so I appreciate that. Now, indulge me.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore? No, no, no. Each one specific.
Oh, okay.
An autographed copy.
Ms. Kesha?
Thank you.
Ms. Kristen?
Thanks.
Mr. Sidney? We'll keep that one here. Ms. Nona?
Another excuse.
Mr. Shirley? Mr. Karen?
Maybe you should hand them out.
Yes. Mr. Bonds? Make sure you get the right ones. It's yours, Keith. Angela? Just bear with me. Mary Ann? That's yours? Yes, ma'am.
That's the Aggie version.
Since I've been elected mayor, I've been doing a lot of reading on leadership and serving others. I recently read this great book entitled The Go-Giver by Bob Berg and John David Mann. The concept of this book is rather than focusing on being a go-getter, we should focus on becoming a go-giver. So that got me to thinking. This could be a great thing to share with the city council and the city staff. And then I thought, this would be a great thing to share with the citizens of Longview. So we're going to try something new. We're going to start a book club. Don't laugh. Tonight, I provided all the city department heads and each member of the city council with a copy of this book. We're going to discuss it once a week in a new Facebook group titled Mayor Mack's Book Club. It's really original. And here at the council meetings. I would hope that you will read this book. It's a very simple read. It's only 131 pages. It'll be a good one for us to start with. This will give us a way to engage each other, and hopefully, once we're through, we will have a better city and have a better approach on how to serve people, which is what we are here to do. One more thing. I've already spoken to the local bookstores in town, Barron's, Books-A-Million, Hastings. They will all be carrying the books, and have a special display set up at their stores. I encourage all of us to go out and buy this book, but I encourage you to shop local and support those who support our community. The Longview Public Library will also have a few copies of the book, so you can check them out there if you'd like to check them out at the library. So bear with me. Let's try this. I guarantee you, when you read this book, and this book is geared towards success, but success is divided in many different ways. It's not just financial success that I'm after up here. What I'm after is a successful city that serves its citizens and a successful citizenry that serves its city. And I can tell you, if we will, if we will just do this, it's only going to last 10 weeks. There's a schedule. It's on the Facebook page. It's just 10 weeks. There's five basic principles to this book. We'll take two weeks with each principle. One week we'll discuss a principle, the next week we'll discuss the application of that principle. And I guarantee you, if you will do this, it will change the way you approach people and how you see yourselves as a servant. So hope you'll give it a try. Hope you'll join us. Monday nights, we'll be there, and I look forward to the discussion. So nothing else? This meeting is adjourned. Oh, I will get the police and the fire chiefs one, too. I promise you, guys.